Good evening and welcome to the Arlington School Committee. It is Thursday, February 12, 2015. I would like to welcome the members, the superintendent and administrative staff. I would like to welcome and recognize the Arlington Educators President, Ms. Hanson. Welcome. Dr. Ampe will be absent tonight because of personal reasons. Mr. Thielman and Mr. Pierce are delayed because of traffic, and I think we all understand that. This time, I would like to direct your attention to the artwork in the room, and we'll begin right here to my right. This is fourth grade line drawings. Rob Lowe, who works under the name Supremundane, is an artist, illustrator and designer in Great Britain. Fourth grade students studied his distinctive drawings while learning about line. Supremundane refers to a style of drawing as obsessive doodles. Looking at his work, students noticed that he created variety by changing his patterns, colors and the amount of space in between lines. Students picked up on how darker colors come forward and the lighter colors recede into the background. Fourth grade students used Sharpies to create their own obsessive doodle line drawings. They played with repetition, pattern, using both organic curvy lines and straight lines. As they worked, they saw that a simple pattern could be repeated into a complex composition. And I apologize, I need to give credit to the students at both the Stratton and Thompson School, and the art teacher is Deborah Campagna. Moving down on that same wall, still over to my right, is kindergarten, James Rizzi City Scapes. Kindergarten students looked at the work of James Rizzi. Rizzi was a pop artist best known for his brightly colored cityscapes. Students made a strong connection with his work and his cartoon-like style. Together, we noticed how Rizzi used color, shape and line to create his lively cities. Students wished they could live in such a colorful place. To create their own cityscapes, students first planned by drawing and pencil. They added personality to each building by adding facial features. Finally, students colored the cities. They tried hard to fill the whole page with color and to create a city that is full of joy. In the back of our room, second grade snowman paintings. Second grade students were introduced to the value one of the elements of art. Students discussed the way artists use value to create an illusion of three-dimensional space. After experimenting with mixing tints and shades, students used white, blue and black paint to create nighttime paintings of snowmen. They used tints and shades of blue to create areas of light and shadow. They worked hard at creating the illusion of three-dimensional space and real snowmen. As a final step, students decorated their snowmen with different colors and gave them personalities. And to my right, behind Mr. Schlickman, first grade owl collages. First grade students learned about owls in art class. Looking at photographs of owls, students noticed different shapes, patterns, colors and textures on each animal. After sharing facts about owls, students were, went on creating their own owl collages. Cutting shapes is a skill that many first graders are still developing. While working on their owls, students learned how to cut two shapes at once, and they practiced cutting circles. As a final detail, many students drew lines on their owls, creating the texture of feathers. And our last piece right over here to my right is fifth grade koru drawings. Fifth graders, fifth grade students created these drawings based on the work of artist Raywin Harris. Harris is from New Zealand, and her paintings are inspired by the Maori people and the symbol of the koru plant. Koru is a type of fern that grows in the shape of a spiral. The Maori people believe that the spiral symbolizes the unfolding of new life or a new beginning. The koru spiral features prominently in Harris's work. Her paintings are dense abstractions of nature. After looking at her paintings, students began their own koru designs. They include a spiral and then fill their compositions with designs that were inspired by nature. Again, I would like to thank Deborah Campagna and all the students at Thompson and Stratton School for their beautiful work that is gracing our room. At this time, we will have public participation. Is there any at this time? No. Okay. We're giggling because there's no one in the audience. Superintendent's proposed budget will now be open for discussion. Dr. Bodie?
This is lovely. Let's wait till this comes down. We have a PowerPoint this evening that you also have in Novus.
No, we don't have it.
Yes, we do.
I don't.
Hit.
Okay.
Try F5 and see, or refresh.
This Novus thing works a lot better than the iPad than on the machine.
It's in the regular cover sheet is the problem. All right, well, we'll have it up here in just a second. So, we are at the point tonight, for those that are listening and may not be as entirely aware of the process, that we've been living for the last couple of months. This process of developing the FY16 budget, which is the budget for 2015-16, actually begins in the fall. The first part of the process is developing a timeline. And we are at the point in the timeline when the administration's called the superintendent's budget is presented to the school committee for consideration. But this is also, as I said, on the heels of a lot of discussion that's gone on. In fact, in December, as we all know, the principals came and presented what they thought were some of the really high needs, and that was culled from what other needs that they also felt but had to prioritize. So, there's been discussions at building levels, at department levels, and we are at the point now of being able to, with more sure numbers, know exactly how many of these things we're going to be able to fund in next year. So, tonight, my intent is to just give you an overview, sort of an executive summary of where we are with the budget, what the priorities are, in a 30,000-foot view of the numbers for the budget. For those that are watching, you can find the link on the website, but I also sent an email to all the parents earlier this evening with the link to the budget in case they wanted to follow along. All of you know Diane, Diane Fitzjohnson, and she has been working very, very hard on this over the last many months, actually, but intensely in the last month. As we look to the budget for FY16, there are a number of budget priorities I'll just speak to. The first is that we are, we want to successfully conclude negotiations with the Arlington Educators Association, which are teachers, as well as all of our other unions, all of which have contracts up for renewal this year. One of the things that I mentioned in the preface to the budget, which is the superintendent's message, is that three years ago, when we had the beginnings of another contract, that was the time when the town went, chose with the agreement of all of our unions to enter into the GIC, which is the state health program. It was, resulted in quite a lot of savings for the town and also for teachers with premiums. But I think that we would all agree that there was a great savings that was realized from doing that, and in fact, it was those savings with addition Chapter 70 money that we realized that we didn't expect, as well as money from the kindergarten, being able to not charge tuition anymore for kindergarten, that we've been able to extend the life of the plan that we had after the last override. But as part of that decision, there was an agreement made to look at the salaries among a group of what we now call the Town Managers 12. And so, the town undertook creating a salary study across these 12 communities, and this was both for union and non-union. And the results of that study, which is again on the website for both the town, and I think there's a link also to it on the school website, that study is being used in negotiations in this round. Another budget priority is that we want to reduce class sizes at the middle school by having a half cluster next year, which means that that would be two teachers, as well as increasing one of our tech teachers to full-time, so that we have three full-time technology engineering teachers at the middle school. And it's important to do that because in these classes where they're using equipment that needs to be, students need to be very careful using and needs quite a bit of supervision. It is not really acceptable to have 30 students in the class, and we do have some classes like that at the middle school. I will say that we have extraordinary teachers that are able to manage that, but as we go forward next year, and also as enrollment increases at Odysseum, we do need to increase that. We also need to add an additional high school teacher, and it's not necessarily a teacher, but different FTEs depending upon class sizes and student course selections this spring. We're able to maintain five reserved teaching positions in order to respond to enrollment growth as we go through the spring and summer. Though, I will say with some caution, that last year, we also had five reserved positions, and those positions were quickly needed as we had the enrollment growth that we saw last summer. We also, another budget priority, is that we had 2.5 social workers that were funded through a grant, which no longer will be a revenue source next year, and so we incorporated those 2.5 teachers, social workers, I should say, into the budget. We also need to increase one psychologist position to full-time, and also the addition of a specialized speech and language assistant to help with caseloads. One of the other things that we've talked about this fall is the need to get our teaching assistant salaries in a more competitive range than they had been. We began that process the last budget cycle, and we've been actually trying to work at that, quite honestly, over the last few years. So, what we have done in this budget is move the salary to 17,000, which actually represents a 3.3 percent. We had hoped to have it actually higher than that, but you all understand, as we look at the numbers, why that was not possible. And the last priority has to do with maintenance. As we've talked about this table before, next year, we are going to have a new department in the town, a facilities department, that will consolidate all of the maintenance people and custodians into one department, which in the next year will be fully funded. As we begin this transition, our role as a school department will be to share the cost with the town for having the director's salary as well as administrative support person. So, our contribution is roughly in the area of about 90,000. So, these are the main budget priorities as we look at the proposed budget for FY16. But let me, can you just go back to the slide on maintenance for one second? We have talked about this, but I do want to emphasize one, a couple of points here, and that is that the purpose of, besides handling all of the maintenance in the town as we currently do, but they're divided in the town, and every department has their own people, will consolidate all of that for greater efficiency. But I think what everyone is hoping will happen and are planning to make this be successful is to begin the process, having long-range planning for all of our buildings. We have built buildings and we maintain them, but we don't have that kind of planning that has, planning where you actually have a schedule for when you do painting and different kinds of repairs. Right now, we're pretty much reacting to the emergency of the moment rather than having a plan. Now, that's not to say that emergencies aren't going to happen, but I think that the work of this department will be to make sure that we have a long-range plan and a maintenance plan. All right. As we look at the current budget, the current budget is about $56.5 billion, of which it comes from three categories. Unlike the town, we have other sources of revenue for our budget. We have the town appropriation, which of course is the largest amount of money, and some of that money comes from Chapter 70, which is the allocation the state gives for education, but it comes through the general fund of the town. We also have grants. Some of those are competitive grants, most of them are entitlement grants. And then also, we have revolving accounts, which include the different fees that we collect. So, that represents the total, the different revenue sources. Now, when we look at FY16, we're going to see that we're going to be just over $59 million, which gives us a differential of just around $3 million, just shy of $3 million. Now, that would seem like it's a lot of money, but let's take a look at actually how that money will be utilized in FY16. So, we have roughly a net increase in revenue of just under $3 million. However, of that, there's, the total mandatory increases, the total costs are roughly $2.6 million, which is just about $300,000 less than what the revenues are. And so, what is in that group of mandatory increases? Well, one is that everyone that is currently an employee and all of our other expenses that we've had are rolled over to FY16. And included in that are all of the adjustments that we will make as a result of our negotiated settlements with our employees. That will include the COLAS, as well as any equity adjustments that might be made. It also represents increases in special education costs, particularly out of district. Out of district tuitions and transportation. One of the things that we know is going to happen next year is that we're going to have a new contract with the Collaborative Transportation Group, and very likely, that's going to result in an increase. So, we've anticipated that. We don't know what the increase will be, but we've had to anticipate it in this budget. And as I said, the other part of this is that this is increase, the base of where we are now gets rolled over. But the thing I need to remind the committee, and of course, you know this, is that last year, when we had the large enrollment growth over the summer, we increased our base quite a bit in order to have teachers in our classrooms and specialists that were needed. So, that is our mandatory cost. Now, those budget priorities that I just went through, if we were to cost all of those out, it would be roughly about a million dollars. Well, that would be $700,000 shy of what we have in terms of revenue, so we've actually had to look at what other types of reductions we could take, which is, we call the restructuring. And in the budget book that you have, there's a, there is a list of all of those reductions that we would make, and we can talk about those later. I will also add that in the budget book are the list of the asks that were given this year, both by principals and administrators. And you can see that there's a lot of things that we would not be able to fund in this budget. Now, when Diane talks a little bit later about our multi-year plan, we have been thinking about some of the other priorities that we were not able to fund this year, and thinking about whether we would fund them in year two, and even then possibly year three. So, we can go through that at some point, but this is right now just sort of a high level. Look at this. So, but taking those reductions, we are able to put this in proof to our revenue. Now, it's always nice to have graphics just to see how, what it looks like visually in terms of what the revenue is. And as you can see, the vast majority of the income, the revenue, is from town appropriation. What we don't have right now is the Chapter 70 number. I know that, I think Mr. Schlickman would like to know the number, we just don't have it yet. But it will be a part of the town appropriation. And then there's the grants, and then the revolving fees. In the next graphic, you can see where the major categories that are in the budget book, how those relate to each other in terms of the whole. And one of the things that, you know, probably will catch your attention as well is that the, there's a little bit of equality here, a little bit, still a little bit less, but the cost for special education still are a little bit less than general education, but they are, they're still a major expenditure of the budget, and in rough numbers, you might look at it's a little bit less than a third there. But I will say, and Ms. Johnson has looked at this, as a percentage of the budget, it's remained fairly constant throughout the last few years. Are you getting affirmation on that? Yes, yes. All right. So, we are at the point of this presentation where I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Johnson so that she can talk a little bit more about how all this fits in a multi-year plan, and just take you in a look at some of the subsets of the budget.
Okay, thank you. I know we've all seen this form before, but just to reiterate, this is the long-range projection and how the current budget fits into that. And there are a couple of things to which I'd like to draw your attention. In the bright yellow, the enrollment growth factor, which in prior iterations was a calculation based on our expected number changes, that number now represents what we're putting forth as a proposal in this budget for new ads, as opposed to what we were estimating based on a calculation in prior iterations. And the sort of golden rod colored salary equity adjustments right here, oh, that color doesn't show up very well here, does it? I'm sorry. The 475, 479, that's the amount of money that we've set aside to do equity adjustments within the budget. As you see in this iteration, we're still counting on 2% for everyone, so this would be salary adjustments on top of that 2%. So, the 2% carries forward throughout the plan, but in FY16, those are adjustments that we're going to make to salary as a consequence of negotiation. If we look into '17, there is also a salary equity adjustment, and that might be a bit of a misnomer. What that is there are two things that we wanted to do that we think are very important, but we just weren't able to fund this year. And that is increasing the kindergarten TAs from half-time to full-time, and increasing the SLCA, the substantially separate classroom teaching assistance, to the BSP level. We have chronic and persistent problems with retaining staff in the SLCs in the teaching assistant role, and so we want to make it more competitive by increasing the salary, but we just couldn't squeeze it in this year. But it isn't our plan to squeeze it in next year. In the out-years, we're still calculating enrollment growth factor increases based on a numbers of estimated students, and as you know, those change from year to year. And even though we show a slight deficit in '17, '18, and a little bit more in '19, the numbers in the bright yellow here and down here are all numbers that we can work with in future budgets to get to where we need to be based on the number of kids we actually have. The revenues, of course, will shift from the town with the enrollment growth factor. That will continue to reflect changes from the prior year. In FY16, it's right here, 530069, that was based on the number of students we added over the summer going into this year, and so the numbers on that line as we move forward are projections based on the enrollment models that we've been using all along. So, there's still a lot of room to flex, but built into these assumptions here are the salary equity adjustments we're contemplating in negotiations to be, and you can see that we can afford to carry those forward based on our current thinking. We also, in this model, have not included increases. We've actually had a decrease in energy costs because we realize we can take some savings from what we've been budgeting traditionally, now that we know our actual costs on the new Thompson and other areas where we've saved some money. And maintenance, I'm not increasing their base budget going into next year. Next year, we're going to hand off the budget to them, and it's going to be theirs forevermore. So, you see in the light blue, they come out of the budget, we stop increasing them in '16, and they come out of the budget in '17. The salaries come out of the budget in '17, and we also take them out of the revenue base, because the portion of the budget that they will take with them will come right off our town appropriation. Any questions on this? Just to have a few graphs that are a little easier to look at.
You know, Diane, one quick question.
Sure. Should I go back?
No. Just a quick clarification. You're talking about maintenance personnel costs and?
Correct. All our custodians, all our maintenance people.
Not non-personnel costs, right? They're going to remain with us, right?
No, the non-personnel, all of it's going.
All of it's going.
All of it's going.
All right.
If you look at the five-year comparison, it's a little off-kilter this year because right now, we have consolidated all of the contract increases into one line rather than spreading them out on a person-by-person basis, because we have not yet concluded negotiations. We don't know what our tables will look like. We can't actually guess what anybody's salary is precisely going to look like. And so, you know, I struggled with this. Do I show the 2%? Do I march on forward in time? But that's not right. Do I, so I opted to show nothing at all, and all the money, that's how I did it in '13, too. All the money is consolidated under administration for convenience sake, but that, yeah, that's not, we're not just like doubling down on administrative salaries. That's everybody's increases. They're just stored there for the time being. So, when we go back, when we settle, when we put in the salaries person by person for next year, it will spread out and we will see the trends in a much better way. So, looking at this year at this point in time doesn't show you much because of that anomaly, and staff is the biggest cost throughout the budget.
Did you just, the administration in FY16?
Yes.
Did you just address that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Basically, all the money we're planning to give people in increases next year is sitting there, because we haven't decided what it's going to look like for each person.
So, we're not looking to increase administration alone just by that?
No.
Thank you.
That's everybody's increases for the whole district.
That will end up going over to all of these.
It'll spread out through everybody.
Thank you.
But in terms of looking at graphs, it makes it look very strange, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it looks terrible.
$2 million in administration.
Yeah, no, no, that's not what we're doing. We're just storing the money in a big pot.
We're going.
Putting the money in a big pot until we decide how it's going to be allocated.
Rob got all excited.
I don't think so. I just wanted to say one quick word about special education and interventions. This is something we've started to track separately in the budgets for a couple of years, and I know you're all familiar with it, but it's an important concept to reiterate that we must invest in help to students that are struggling, who do not reach the level of need to qualify for an IEP. It is good for the kids, it is good for the system, and most importantly, from my perspective as the financial person, it's good for our pocketbooks. Because if we can address children's educational difficulties before they become, before they reach the need for special education, I think everybody's served to the best. So, these are important areas, and unfortunately, in budgeting, they tend to be areas that get cut quickly. Math and, you know, math and reading, you know, enhancements, and they're low-hanging fruit, they don't affect class size, but in terms of the health, the educational health of the kids, they're really important things, and we continue to invest in that. And I flag them because they are, they live in the gray area between regular ed and special ed. And I didn't want to not mention them because they're very important to what special ed spending looks like, but I didn't want to throw them into special ed because that's a little disingenuous, and I've wanted to be very consistent in how I talk about sped so you can see apples to apples over time.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
The mandatory training that the state is required for us for teachers, English, second language learners and stuff like that for the teachers, is that in this part of the budget?
No, that would be in professional development.
Thank you.
And I just, this is another chart that shows the interventions expense, and while they're not relatively speaking a huge amount of the budget, I think they do have a huge impact in terms of the well-being of our students and in the containing of special education costs. But mostly, they do great things for our kids.
So, that's the overview.
And I just, this is another chart that shows the interventions expense. And while they're not relatively speaking a huge amount of the budget, I think they do have a huge impact in terms of the well-being of our students and in the containing of special education costs. But mostly, they do great things for our kids.
So that's the overview. What we're hoping tonight is to have some discussion about these priorities, discussions, questions that you might have about anything that you see in this, in the budget, though I realize you haven't had a lot of time to do that. And that's why, really, the major part of the discussion will probably occur on February 26. Our timeline is that that will be a major budget discussion. And then on March 12, the committee will vote the budget, whatever changes we need to make. We already have a date from the Finance Committee to come and present the budget on the 23rd of March. So we also have, for people watching, if they would like to come and comment on the budget after they had a chance to and sit with it, that will, opportunity is at the February 26 meeting from 6:30 to 7:30. So we will have a hearing on the budget. So tonight, maybe the discussion might not be into the weeds of the budget as much as in terms of some of the bigger picture parts of this. And if there's anything that you want us to take another look at, that's where we need to go tonight.
Anybody want to start? Ms. Seuss?
So I just want to reiterate that we've only seen the budget for, I estimate, about 31 hours or something, which were spent sleeping and doing other things.
Driving in the snow.
Driving in the snow, selling Girl's Day cookies. So one thing that jumps out at me is that we have not decided to increase the elementary school teachers. And I know that we have these five reserve positions, but I worry...
The numbers.
What?
Okay, sorry.
Oh, no, sorry, about the actual positions.
The number of positions.
Number of positions. So we have, you know, two positions being added to the middle school, one position being added to the high school, and zero to the elementary school as of now. And I know we have these five reserve positions, but we also probably can assume that we're going to be increasing elementary school enrollment. We have a class leaving that has 423 with 19 positions. The classes down low, kindergarten, first grade, have numbers around, hovering around 500, as you know, with 23, 22, 21 positions. And I wonder if there's a way, if we should find some way to say, to designate two positions at the elementary level, we know we're going to need them, and keep the reserve positions as truly reserved, something unexpectedly coming up. I mean, I think we can sort of look at it now and say, we just know we're going to need them.
What, that's a great point, and I think that, from our point of view, that we're thinking that maybe it might end up being all elementary and not be as readily available to the secondary level. Right now, when I look at all of the classrooms in the district, we don't know what, how they're going to change. So right now, we're going to have the same number of classrooms as we have. It's possible that the inclusion of a couple of more students at one grade level at one school is going to force the need of another classroom. We don't know that yet. But, you know, if the committee would like to make, say it's elementary, I think it's two is a safe bet that it's going to be elementary, for sure. We also don't know what's going to happen with the high school in terms of, thank you, in terms of the choices that the students make as well. So we'll have to wait and see how that plays itself. We already know that, of that one position, 0.4 of it's going to science. So there isn't that much, so we probably are going to need some of that reserve as well.
Ms. Starks?
I have, one question I have is that on page 10 and 11, where you've listed out all of the...
Section?
Is this in the beginning?
I think it says top of the page.
Superintendent's budget message.
Okay, great. I'm with you.
So at line 10, we add in the social workers?
Yes, the general-funded social workers, and we delete the grant-funded social workers at the bottom. It's, you know, it's a wash, and it was a choice of either show the wash this way or don't show them at all. And since everybody was very concerned about the social workers, I elected to do it this way. It's...
Understand, though, it seems to me actually that we're quadrupling the count because we're adding them in as an expense, and then we're saying that we are...
We're taking them as a reduction.
Restructuring them and...
Yeah, that's a reduction.
Oh, okay, all right.
So the reduction, the restructuring or cuts.
Yes.
So we're cutting grant-funded social workers, and we're adding social workers. So it's a wash.
Okay, all right.
And there's no way to do it other than to show it in and out or...
Both ways.
Show it both ways or show it no ways. And I wanted to show, I wanted to show it, so this is...
All right, cool. So far, that's it.
Ms. Pierce?
Nothing else. Mr. Schlickman?
Not at this time.
Ms. Thielman?
I missed the beginning. Did you, Kathy, did you talk about the Medco kindergarten?
No.
We were going to get to that.
We're going to wait and give that news after this.
Well, I can talk a little bit about it since you're bringing it up.
Yeah, okay.
This budget here doesn't reflect some reductions that we have just literally learned about.
Today?
Today.
We got the number on the kindergarten grant today.
Right, so I was wondering what the...
It's not incorporated. It's not incorporated there. It's not incorporated in the monthly reports.
But it's going to impact this?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, so.
Do you want to give them the number?
It's roughly $50,000, one full-time teacher.
That's what it is, okay.
Yeah, which we can absorb.
Well, I'd like to suggest something.
Well, you know, wait a minute. For the sake of the public, we need, they need to know what we're talking about. So the governor, could you just explain?
Back in December, we know that there's a deficit in the state, and Governor Patrick recommended some 9C reductions to cover the deficit. Now that Governor Baker is here, he has increased the number, increased and extended the number of reductions. And the two that affect us the most are the kindergarten grant. The kindergarten grant pays for, I think, all but, I think, all but one or two of our half-time kindergarten teaching assistants and some professional development money. A little bit of materials, but not much. That grant's been going down every year. So that's how we rely on being able to provide teaching assistance. They've now cut it for this year. That's what a 9C cut, it's this year, $50,000. So we have to figure out to absorb that, which will have to obviously come out of one of the revolving accounts. So, but we don't know if it's going to be restored next year.
Right.
That's the problem. The other big cut, and it's much more than Governor Patrick had done, is that, is Medco. We thought that there was going to be about a 5% reduction back in December for this year, and another 5% has been suggested just in the last couple of days. In fact, there was a meeting at State House today on this very topic. So that's a 10% reduction, which is quite a bit. And again, if it goes into next year, what is that going to mean in terms of, you know, the support?
Yeah, okay. So that's in our, okay.
It's not in there at all.
All right, it's not in there at all.
No.
And, well, thank you for that update. The other thing is they, you know, in our presentation, it says increased, but increases desire but not funded for FY '16. I'm looking at page nine. It would, wow, look at that. It would be good to, it might be good, do we list these anywhere in here?
Yeah, they're on page 13, the superintendent's budget message, section two.
What section?
Section two.
It's on page 13, right at the beginning. We captured all of that was discussed with the principals and actually the Budget Subcommittee and even at this table.
You're way ahead of me then. Oh, voila. Okay, good job. You got it done. I asked for it in two minutes.
Isn't that great?
Thank you. I have no more questions.
I'm going to have a question, but going back to the kindergarten thing, and I'm very simplifying it. When we got the additional Chapter 70 money, it came out on an annual basis for the additional kindergarten going from half-time to full-time several years ago. Came to approximately $1.4 million a year. Plus, we see 900,000 of it. I'm using rough numbers.
Okay, okay.
The town has had that extra money. I think it's really great. If we're going to now, I guess, I'm asking the committee, and I'm suggesting the committee suggest to the superintendent to negotiate some talks to the town that if we're just getting cuts in grant money, that we look to get a little piece of that extra money back.
At least to...
Because our kindergarten students going full-time generate approximately $400 to $500 additional money that the town would never have gotten in it. That was part of our agreement. We're now being cut in grant money in kindergarten. Just to ask the town, they've been good to us before with the additional students to give us a little bit back to help us offset that. I accept the fact that we may be able to find it, but when we find it, we have to, something gets hurt somewhere along the line, and looking at that. I would also ask, I did it immediately as soon as I found out about these potential cuts from the governor, the legislature, and they have to go, I contacted Representative Garbley and Rogers and Senator Donnelly to ask them to please stop this right away. We constantly are very passive and take these hits, and we need to go forward. I have a question on the current budget going forward. Our legal expenses, 200,000, 400,000, have been constant over several years. We're finished with the major litigation. I'm not looking to revisit that. I don't, we have not expended that kind of money over the past year. I think that's an area we need to look at, as a possible savings or reallocating that money in the budget. We've consistently put 200,000, 400,000 in us over the period. We're not even close to that. And in fact, from what I've seen so far this year, we've even spent a little, considerable amount less in several of the years. And I thank all those people that are involved in that from our side. That's, again, going back to what Dr. Seuss said earlier, we've just had a short time to look at this. I'm sure you're going to get a lot more questions in the near future. Anyone else? Yes.
Yeah, I have one more small question. So this is in section one, the graph, the five-year comparisons. The one thing I noticed that went down a little are these early interventions, which I know we value very highly. And I was wondering, is that based on particular staff? Or is it, what is the...
Well, remember, it looks funny because you're not seeing the normal increases. And so if there was, you know, absent the normal increases, and if there is potentially any turnover, if we had a more experienced reading teacher leave and a less experienced one come in, they'd cost less.
I see.
So that doesn't necessarily represent shrinkage in services. It could just represent staff turnover.
Okay, good.
It's, you know, the absence of the normal progression of salaries makes everything look weird.
Right, right. I was also actually wondering, given that that other graph that shows the administration costs so high, looks, you know, scary or something, but if we could have a better breakdown of, and I know it's all estimates and not very, you know, of what's exactly going on there. So for example, if a member of the public were to contact us and say, what's going on with this graph? It looks bad. We could have an explanation, a better explanation.
The explanation is, is that all potential contract settlements are sitting in that line right now. And I do state so in the narratives in each of these sections.
Right, so we can't have a breakdown of those...
Correct.
...gestimates of what they're looking at?
Correct, no.
Not yet, okay.
But once it's all settled, it will go from there back to where it belongs, and you'll be able to see the salary increases on a person-by-person basis.
Right.
And I think at that time, we'll make a public statement that that chart has been readjusted. I think it's a good point.
Right, I just wondered, I mean, somebody contacts me tomorrow, I'd like to be able to say something more detailed than that general. I can't.
The only thing we can say at this time is we're negotiating.
We're in negotiations.
Set aside for negotiations.
Okay, okay.
Ms. Pierce? Thank you. Half a cluster for seventh grade is being proposed. A full cluster of sixth grade this year was made, right? So why not a full, wouldn't there a full one needed to be made for seventh grade?
Well, probably that could be an argument. It's an issue of two things right now. One, of course, is the budget. And another issue is space. We have a plan for next year with space, and we anticipate that we're probably going to have to have another half cluster, if not a whole cluster, we'll just wait and see, the following year. And then we have a plan for how that will happen, and then also going the years out. So we're increasing the numbers. I think that when you look at it in ratios, you'll find that it's really not that much different than what the sixth grade did. There are going to be a little bit larger classes, larger clusters than they had in the sixth grade, but not unreasonably so.
And is the sixth grade for next year going to have the...
Four.
Four?
They'll keep the four.
Keep the four? Okay, and just a couple of follow-ups, which don't pertain to clusters. But on page, on the funding summary under grants, I'm wondering whatever happened with American history and Mandarin, where did they go?
They went away. They ended.
They ended, but did we, did we continue them?
Teaching American history was a competitive federal, direct federal grant.
Right.
And we got it, and it's gone, and Project Success is going away.
Right.
So those are three-year shots, basically, and then they're done.
We still teach American history, though.
But teaching, but this specific teaching American history grant was for...
It was for professional development and for the enhancement of the teaching of history.
It wasn't a curriculum for the students, per se?
Not, not, no.
Okay.
Well, a little bit. We did buy some kits in the elementary with the, for the social studies. But most of it was for professional development, and it was a shared grant with this group of other communities.
And in that genre, Ms. Dunn's position and who's going to be come the next Ms. Dunn, hopefully someone soon, where do we stand on that, and is that in the budget?
It is.
Okay.
It's fully funded.
Okay.
You know, with the expectation that it'll be filled at a 1.0. That's carried forward in the base. The fact that she's not in it, the position still is there.
Would you like Mr. Spiegel to speak to that?
The position's posted.
Okay, great.
We're still soliciting applications, and we are reviewing the applications as they come in and hope to begin maybe soon after the break to set up interviews and bring people in for interviews.
Okay, so...
And we have a committee that we're forming with AEA representatives, member from the different, from the department.
Great.
I'm just curious, why AEA involved since it's an administration AAA position?
Because under the AEA contract for any administrative positions that affects AEA, they have a...
That's right.
Seats at the table.
Plus, it's pretty important to get teacher input on this.
Yeah, we want teacher input on this.
Ms. Starks? I'm just, sorry, Mandarin, that we stopped getting the Mandarin grant, but we're still offering it, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we absorbed, we absorbed the course into the base.
Okay, thanks.
Several years ago, we started putting in the five reserve positions in anticipation of need. Last year, this current year and last year, we're just barely halfway through the year, and they're gone, right? Well, we're pretty close to it.
Last May, they were gone.
Okay, last May, that makes it worth it. The concept of five reserve positions, they're not reserved anymore. They're being absorbed very quickly by population and programs and stuff. I can appreciate, understanding what the structure of programs and classes is going to be at the secondary level, but a lot of these positions get absorbed at the elementary level, don't they?
Mostly.
Right, and of course, the wild card in all this, we want to call it that, is what's going to happen with kindergarten enrollment. And that process I'm going to talk about in the superintendent's report begins in March.
Going along with Dr. Seuss, is that perhaps this is something, and you're going to hear me spend that legal money a thousand ways, more ways than once, but that may need to be a priority. Our class sizes, from my perspective as a teacher, are very high. They're doable, the teachers are functioning, but we're at a breaking point. And so I'd like you to think about that. Again, space, again, is a premium. If we had all the money in the world, where are we going to put these classes and stuff? That becomes another thing. So, thank you. We all set to move on? Thank you very much for that. You'll be hearing more of us. Monthly financial report. Ms. Johnson?
Yes, let me, it's so odd. As much as I love my iPad, they not flipping to the report is... There we go. We are continuing along. We are beginning to realize a bit of savings. A month ago, we were looking prettier for savings, but then snow happened. And while we've had many snow days, which are actually less fiscally impactful than days when we struggle to get open because we don't have to pay as much overtime, we can pay them on straight time to come in and work to remove the snow, it's still going to, it's still going to take a bite. I mean, we're, you know, the storm coming in Saturday, Sunday, we've got to get the building open, and if it's of such a massive quantity that they can't wait until Monday or Tuesday to come in and work on it, you know, and then more snow again on Wednesday, it just doesn't quit. But as Chairman Hayner pointed out, we are tracking very well in the legal line. And so far, we're tracking under budget and out of district special ed tuition. And my hope is, if we continue to hold the line we're on at present, that we should be able to go to town meeting and ask for some money to be moved back into the special ed reserve. I think we should really work to keep out-of-district tuition sort of a standalone area of the budget so that when we budget it, and if we have a savings, that we should move... so that when we budget it, and if we have a savings, that we should move that into that reserve at town hall. And so we have it for lean years when we have a bad year like last year. So even if we still have to use our reserves to cover the deficit as a whole, I'd still like to move that money from special ed back into the reserve.
Just go through the line.
So, to clarify, right now, we're showing, we're three hundred and eighty-eight, two eighty-three over budget.
Yes.
And that's gonna be made up by, just so I understand, to be made up by going, by, how's it gonna be made up again, by?
Out of the, the reserves that we currently have.
Other reserves that we currently have, okay.
Unless we can realize further savings as we go through the year, which is possible.
It is possible.
Yes.
Because with some positions, we haven't been filled, correct me?
There's positions that haven't been filled, we are not tapping the legal line to an excessive degree.
That's all accounted for in here, or not completely?
No, not completely. I'm still projecting fairly conservatively that we could in fact spend things that we may not. But it's looking at this point in the year like we will not, but I'm not ready to call it yet till we get out of this winter because that could be.
Yeah, right, no, that's a good one.
That's a real joker, so.
Line eight-one-three-one-six, vacation?
That is a line?
Never seen it before, maybe it's been there.
It's been there all along. It's, it's for maintenance and custodial. We're trying to track their different types of, their salary is tracked, they're in a different union structure.
No, I understand, I understand that for the vacation.
It's, it's just for them, it's for custodial and maintenance, it's not for anybody else.
I mean, I'm not trying to tell you your business, but we know how much vacation time they have accrued. I don't know.
We are moving into tracking the, these expenses in more detail than we did previously. And so we haven't quite caught up with getting the budgets to true out with them.
Two lines down, teaching moving allowance. You budgeted a thousand, I can appreciate that.
I'm having difficulty opening it.
I'm sorry, it's eight-one-three-one-eight?
Eight-one-three-one-eight, yes. Yeah, I never budget that adequately.
That, that's almost forty teachers moving.
Yes.
We had that many teachers moving classrooms this year? That's almost like.
It's, they, they, you know, every time a teacher relocates a classroom, you know, every time we have to shift things around.
Even if it's from one room to the next room in the same building?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. The longevity of the custodial, now that's something we should be on top of right away, knowing exactly.
Right, we just started splitting out longevity custodial from long, there's another longevity code for maintenance. And, no, that's, I'm sorry, I misspoke, it's clothing allowance. That, that the budget is, I think I finally consolidated those two lines. But you're right, we will be better on top of the longevity custodial.
I mean, you, you know who's, who's going where and when.
Yep.
And it says pensions, expense will be moved.
That is, those are grant-related little dribs and drabs of pensions that we have to make up. When we get a state grant, a part, a portion, when we have teacher salaries in a state grant, a portion of the grant goes directly to MTRS, but we have to make up the difference. And as you come to the end of a grant, there can be little tweaks, you know, you planned on this teacher and it ended up being that teacher, and there's little ups and downs. And so we keep this line in here to sort of true out those grants at the end of the year. It ends up being fairly small money.
Okay.
But it's basically just a way to balance out our grants.
No.
Yeah.
You wanna follow up on that one?
Nope.
Okay, and my last one is our line eight-seven-six-zero-one. Again, it says court judgments, damage, and settlements. We've just had a discussion anticipating things are down, and you're saying estimating at budget.
I'm still estimating conservatively.
Conservat, okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, I don't, there's nothing in the offing that I'm aware of.
Good.
Yeah, no. I'm just, I'm just playing it safe for now.
Fine, I can, we're looking to have that, most of that money back.
I'm hoping so.
Okay, Mr. Pierce first, and then, just.
Thank you. Eight-three-zero-four, athletic services. And with, with the fees we're charging, the fact that we're estimating over budget over fifty grand, what, why, why, why on that?
Because it costs a lot more to run athletics than we've traditionally budgeted for. It's taken some time under the new athletic director to get a handle on exactly how much it really costs to run our athletic program. And it's significantly more than we budget for, and certainly more than fees cover.
I understand, it's always more than fees cover, but we always plan accordingly with, with the budget.
No, we really haven't when it comes to athletics, because there's been a lot of, there's been change in leadership, and there's been a lot of confusion. I've had a really hard time understanding what exactly was needed. And so we, you know, we've had the new athletic director, you know, really get in there, tell us what we really need to do, and show me what, what's needed. And so what we've seen is that it went significantly over budget last year. And it's slated to, you know, she's trying to bring it in for the spring, but it's.
It was over fifty-two last year?
Oh, yeah.
Is this something that she can do a presentation for us, Dr. Bodie, in the future?
She can, but given.
When she gets it all together. So I think this is important with our history of, of fees and things like this, to let the public know exactly what we're doing and how, what the fees, we, we have a general idea of what the fees are, we're comfortable with that. But to let everybody know where, what each dollar is going for and where it's coming from and things of that nature.
Yeah, because I, I was under the impression that at least this year, last year too, the gate revenues were up.
They are, but, I mean, up gate revenues is at best ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
I mean, the cost of athletics is hot.
Is accounted for in this?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's a very expensive proposition, there's many, many, many staff. You know, we're in negotiations about what they're gonna be paid, you know, there's a, there's a lot of stuff there.
We need to have a presentation on this.
Yeah, yeah.
Once it's done.
That would be great. Now, just a, a quick question, not athletics, but for HVAC contracted service, eight-two-four-one-two, right? We're estimating over probably because of the weather or the design?
No, actually, one of the things that's been very interesting is that at the Pierce School, we've demoed a new fault detection system. It's a software that is able to monitor various systems in the building and see where there's a problem, which is different than an energy management system that says, you know, the energy management system says, turn the lights on at such and such a time, turn them off at this time. The fault detection system says, gee whiz, this classroom is five degrees above where it should be. And then it starts running through things and says, why? And what we're discovering through piloting the software that's been mostly covered by other folks that wanted to test it out in this kind of an environment, what we've been allowed to see is that there's dysfunctions in the way systems have been set up. And when we discover this at the Pierce where we're doing this, we run around and check all the other schools to see. And so we've got the HVAC contractor running up and down in town like a crazy person, fixing all these things that we had no idea. For example, the chiller we put in at the Pierce, when the engineers put it in, they set the, they set the temperature differential for like a half a degree of swing, which means the darn thing is working constantly. You know, that's how you'd set a lab where, you know, you had medical things that had to be kept at a perfect temperature. A school can certainly swing, you know, five or ten degrees, it's not the end of the world. But they didn't set it that way, they set it to like that, and so the thing is running and running. And the fault detection software allowed us to catch that. And now we've reset it, and we're saving money, it's not running as hard, and we'll get a longer life out of that chiller. So every time we find out something at the Pierce through this fault detection, we run around and check all the other buildings.
Oh, that's.
It's great, it's great for the health of our buildings, it's great for our long-term energy savings.
But the short-term cost is?
Short-term, it's a little expensive with our HVAC guy who's running around doing all this stuff.
Now, that will come out of our budget?
All that will, that's all going away.
Okay.
Both the, the additional expense and the savings.
Right.
Right now, we're taking, we're reaping the savings of it, and that's, that's a big chunk of what we're restructuring, what we're cutting out of the budget is savings we're taking in the energy line.
So we're getting hit this year, but the town will hopefully recoup the savings next year?
Well, we're getting the savings this year, so.
Oh, we are, because?
Yes.
Okay.
We're, we're taking a big budget.
Hundred percent, next year we'll get half of it because we're paying half of it.
No, I think, I think the way it's going to work is that the expenses that are covered in our budget this year will be covered next year.
Okay.
And then both the expenses and the money will go off with them.
Thank you.
Dr. Seuss?
I'm worried that this might have already been answered, but the power electricity, this is eight-two-one-zero-three, says expense will be moved, is this being moved?
Yes, we've always budgeted utilities is paid out of other sources. The main other source is the revolving fund for building rental.
Okay, so it's, we're still keeping it in our budget. And actually, my concern is, when we put solar panels on, I wanna realize the savings here.
Yeah, it's not gonna happen. By the time that happens, it's all gonna belong to the maintenance department. But you can rest assured that the savings.
That was the question, okay.
The savings from those panels will go into making sure that we get painted more often and our buildings are kept up better.
Directly go to us.
Right, I won't be able to mine it to buy computer equipment, but it will do good for the buildings, which will help us too.
Okay.
Okay.
Elsie? Okay, statement of interest in Stratton Elementary. Has that been written?
Well, actually, it is written, but what's happened is both Diane and I have had several phone calls with the MSBA. And it became very clear that this project was not going to be qualified under accelerated repair. When we had the, we had the, the monies prior to this for Stratton, that was under a different program completely. It was under the green repair, which was entirely independent of anything else you did. There were, and I don't, it's just, it's, again, it's one of those programs that no longer exists. In the accelerated repair program, they still, it's windows, boilers, and roof. But, here's the but, if you're doing more, that's going to be a much bigger project, and you're gonna be kicking in sprinkler system or any ADA, and the project is bigger, what will happen is that they will say, you're not really eligible for this program, you're eligible for some support, but you have to go into what they call the core program, which is exactly what we're doing for the high school. It's the, it's the rebuild renovation. But the directors from MSBA this year have been very clear to districts, you have to prioritize your, you have to prioritize your, your core submissions. And so we could submit Stratton under the core, but I think that we all agree the first priority is the high school. So what that would mean is that our first priority, so we'd have to wait till the high school was, was admitted into the program, Stratton would be years down the road, because it would be, it would have to be subsequent to the high school. So what, we've had a lot of discussions at, at the town level, and we have all come collectively to the decision that it, it makes much more sense to go forward as, how the planning had gone on for funding Stratton so that it can be done. And the savings would have been not, I mean, it would have been wonderful to have some of the, the savings, which we estimated in the four to six hundred thousand, but in terms of the whole cost of project, when it would get done, the timeliness of it, that's the other piece. If you, even if you got into it and it was your only priority, there's a whole process you have to follow, the same process we went through with Thompson, we would not be shovel-ready June sixteen. It's not, that wouldn't happen. So there are a lot of things, we had a lot of discussion about it, and this was a collective, collective decision, and we go forward. And it's, we will, we'll continue to work on the Arlington High School SOI, so it's submitted in April. So that's where that stands. Actually, Diane wrote the SOI for Stratton, but it's unfortunately not gonna.
Could we, when you got the SOI completed prior to submission for the high school, would you disseminate it among the staff?
I did send it out to, I sent it, I think I sent it out to the facilities committee.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We sent out to everybody, yeah.
We can send out, are you gonna send out to everybody?
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
We're happy, we want more eyes on it, take another look at it, we wanna see if there's anything else. We have, you know, some other data we can put in, particularly enrollment, that's gonna be the key. And, oh, and what, excuse me, one more thing on that is that we, well, we'll need to complete it so that we schedule the votes. We have to go through the voting process again, Board of Selectmen, the, the school committee, so that's, that's in the works as well.
Provide us a timeline for that so that we can be prepared for it, that sounds great. Okay, superintendent's report, two and a half minutes.
Okay, actually, I have quite a few things. I already, I already warned you.
She already warned me.
Well, the first is the weather. This has just been extraordinary. I love the word historic because that's really what it has been like. And I have to give so much credit to Mike Watermacher and the DPW, but, but our own staff have been amazing as well. Mark Miano, Jeremy Brandl, who is our head custodian, organizing all of our custodians and maintenance people to just stay with the storm. Keeping our, keeping our parking lots cleared, keeping walkways cleared. DPW has been helpful the other day when we, the second, the second snow day this week, they loaned us one of the front loaders they had. I always say that.
Front-end loaders.
Front-end loaders, so that we could even push back the parking lots a little bit more. We, we were losing in all the parking lots through these storms, ten spaces, fifteen spaces, which is a lot. And with the front-end loader, we were able to retrieve about half of them. But that was a lot of teamwork between our staff and DPW, and they, they really did, did well, and they're exhausted. They've been working around the clock, and of course, I'm sure they must be just groaning when they hear there's another big storm coming in this weekend. We're gonna have a big push on this in terms of the storm, because one of the things that it did happen with all these snow events is that a number of athletic events were canceled. And we're getting toward the end of the season, and even though MIA has pushed back the season deadline a little bit, not a lot, we have a lot of makeup games, and some of them are Monday, so we're really gonna be pushing to have that, high school be a top priority on Monday. One of, one of the concerns, I know that I've heard from our parents, is something that we were, we were talking about at the beginning of the week, actually last week, the state of our roofs. And you should know that, you know, just from, soon as the storms ended, we were, that was something that was going on simultaneously to all of this. And we've had this week, five people going around to the different roofs, shoveling them. One of the things that was actually turned out, which was beneficial, is that with the wind, a lot of the flat roofs actually don't have much snow in the middle of them. There, there's, there are more drifts toward the, the perimeters against the walls, but those are all being taken, being reduced on a priority basis. So Mark Miano's had a priority in terms of which roofs are the most possibly vulnerable, though we, the newer schools are in good shape. There, I think the concern is, of course, will be in all, in schools, and I know, actually, it's already existed over town hall and some of the, you know, that there's leaks, you get these, these ice dams, and then it backs in, and that, actually, it's been the, the town offices that have had more problems than the schools in last, last week. So we, we are, we are working on that, and one of the other pieces, and you've seen from my notes home, and certainly our staff has, there's an on-street parking ban, and cars that were parked that are not on Mass Ave or Broadway, those are the two exceptions, will be ticketed and potentially towed. Which that, what is meant for the school department is that we have to make sure that all of our teachers can park on-site, which even with no snow is not always possible. In fact, at some schools, not half the teachers will be parking on the streets. So with Chief Jefferson, we've worked out arrangements, how to use some fire lane spaces and double parking in all of the lots, and we've been able to be successful. So that's, that's working out, and everybody is trying to remain cheerful as they deal with this. So that's what, that's where we are right now with the weather. And I don't know if anybody, before I go on to any other part of this, I don't know if anybody has any questions about where we stand right now.
Let me just, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Let me just ask, how many snow days have we used, and what's our projected last day at, right, at this point?
We have used six, and thank you for mentioning, I should have mentioned that too. That puts us at June twenty-fifth, which is a Wednesday. We've used six days, we've gone past our scheduled five. What our constraint is, is that we can't go past June thirtieth. So we have a couple of more days. We have, is it June twenty-fifth, Thursday?
It's a Thursday.
Thursday, I knew there was three days, yes, it's the Thursday, it's twenty-fifth, it's the Thursday. So we have three days more that we have snow days before we have to consider vacations. Or some, or Saturdays or something. So we'll, that's something that will go out, a message that will go out, we'll just see what happens when we get back from vacation, and if, see if we have any more snow days. When we, when we start having to think about this, what I'm going to encourage parents and staff to do is think about trip insurance for the April vacation.
I'd like just to also consider, next year's calendar is even that much further. We would be at the thirtieth day of June right now if we had six days next year.
That's right.
It's really, really, it's that much more next year. We might not have any snow days next year. This is an unusual year. No question about it.
It's, it's, you know, when you look at the, on the weather channels, you can see they have all these historic dates. It doesn't happen every year, but I have noticed, if you've noticed that, that list, that the time difference between these major events in terms of major years is narrowing. And so I don't know if that's climate change, I don't. And so I don't know if that's climate change, I don't know what it is, but we may, we can't say, oh, we won't have this again for a few more years. That's not necessarily the way it's going to be.
We'll have a better chance of having a drop in kindergarten enrollment.
Ten.
Anyway.
Speaking of kindergarten.
Nice segue.
That was a good segue. Well done. We've sent letters home to everyone that has a child registered to us, not registered, but known to us through the census. And we've sent those letters out. Registration begins on March 3rd and all of the dates. So pretty much, the registrations happen through March, there's a snow day March 18th. Now, this is going to be something we may, this is going to be a little more challenging than we perhaps thought about when we put the schedule together because it begins March 2nd. The town manager thinks that the parking ban could be in effect for some time. This is, if we have another foot this weekend, we are in, going to be, have some very constrained situation in town for a while. So we may have to change the time to do something because the registration occurs here at the high school, and there is parking out in Mass Ave, which is fortunate, but parking will be an issue through this process.
When we, do you do any other type of communication besides what's on the census as far as newspaper or?
Yes.
I don't know if you go to the A-list or something like that.
No.
I understand. Get a surrogate to do that necessarily, but just so that we can encompass as many people so we don't have those late people coming in in the week before school starts and stuff like that. It's going to happen, but we had an awful lot last year, I think.
It turns out the census is not a good predictor of the number of students at all. We had a lot of people who were on census that didn't register, and we had a lot of people, obviously, after that did. But yes, we're trying to try to get the information out in as many venues as possible. And we probably should get this into the library, the children's room there, so that will be, that will be a big effort right after, right after vacation.
Actually, on that, last year you had talked that, mentioned that other towns use a slightly different forecasting model, and I was wondering if we were going to explore alternative modeling, perhaps? There's a program or something?
Yeah, that's a good question. Actually, Lexington has done a modeling which looks at actually who lives in, the enrollments, I should say, the number of students in condos versus single-family. And it's hard to know whether that model will work for us because one of the things they found in their study is that for 10 years, the number of, there was virtually no change in the net for single-family homes. All of their growth was in condos. But that hasn't been true in Arlington.
So this is not-
We've had a lot of growth in single-family and, you know, rentals and so, but it's definitely something to look at.
Okay.
Yeah. Today, we sent out a press release, and not that I'll read the whole press release, but I really want to acknowledge our technology teacher, Brandy Whitney, at the middle school. She, with Gary Blanchett, first of all, as you remember, earlier this year, were recognized by the, recognized as the mass tech program of the year. So they were, they were the best technology program in the state this year at the middle school level. And Brandy Whitney has just been recognized nationally. And this is the Pasco STEM Educator Awards from Pasco Scientific, which is in partnership with the National Science Teacher Association. And in this recognition, she's going to go to the conference in Chicago, all expenses paid to do that with a stipend. It's extraordinary, and I think it's really important for people to understand the quality of teaching that goes on all of our schools, but this program in particular is quite outstanding. So congratulations to Whitney. And I also, some congratulations for athletics. We've actually had an amazing season. Our wrestling team has done really well. Now, they, there's the league championship in the state through the MIA process, but there also is, there is an inter-scholastic wrestling coaches association, and they run wrestling competitions as well. And in fact, there's 150 teams that entered, and at different, at different levels, just like MIA, there's like a Division One, Division Two. So in Division Two, they were, they, they were, they beat the number one and two seeds to win the Massachusetts Inter-Scholastic Championship. And right now, they're currently ranked third in the state in Division Two. So they're doing really, really well. Our basketball team has been undefeated. Now, we are going to be having, the poor kids, boys and girls, are going to have like five in a row, but they're doing, they're doing really well. And one of our, one of our players, Miles Robinson, is just 10 points away from joining the elite 1,000-point club. So you can look on the athletic website if you want to see any of the games, if you're really getting stare-crazy at home this next week with your kids, come to some basketball games, because they're going to be, and hockey, we're going to have a lot of hockey games next week as well. Let me actually just break here since you've been hearing me talk so much. Let me ask Dr. Cheston, if you'd talk a little bit about the technology plan and the forums and where we're going with that?
Sure. So we have posted on the website a draft of the technology plan. It is not significantly different from the technology plan that we have been working on over the last couple of years, but we wanted to have an opportunity for the public, now that it's become such a driving force in our schools, to parents and members of the community to come in and have a conversation with us about their thoughts about the technology plan. If they're unable to attend the two meetings, and unfortunately, the meeting last night had to be rescheduled due to the parking, and we're actually quite leery of rescheduling it at this point right now. We sort of want to wait and see how the parking situation works out until probably the middle of next week before we look at when it would be the right time to reschedule it. However, if, I've already gotten response from one member of the community, and I would welcome anyone who feels like they want to comment on it and, you know, can't wait till we've rescheduled or can't make the rescheduled date to certainly, to email me, and we will take those things into consideration when we meet to finalize the plan. And we'll be presenting to the committee, I believe, at the next school committee meeting. Again, it's very similar to what you saw last year, but this year, we wanted to take input in. We've already had input from teachers, we have a technology committee in the district, that means we wanted to take information and feedback from parents.
You'll get out your presentation to us early enough.
Of course.
Thank you.
All right, and I think the last thing that I have is just reminding everyone about the forum discussion, actually, this discussion is going to occur on Saturday, the 28th of February. It's called Unequal Justice: The Consequences of Race and Class in Our Criminal Justice System. This beginning of discussions around race and class comes out of the vigil that we had for Black Lives Matter, and it has many cosponsors for this program, Arlington Public Schools being one of them, and the Arlington Human Rights Commission, of course, and Arlington International Film Festival, League of Women Voters of Arlington, Mystic Valley Branch NAAACP, St. Agnes Parish, and the list actually is growing. It is Saturday night, February 28th, from 7:00 to 9:00 in the town hall. All right, that's it?
Thank you. Right now, the consent agenda, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event, the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of warrant number 15097 dated January 22nd, 2015, in the amount of $774,874.77. Approval of draft minutes, school committee meeting, January 22nd, 2015. Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Subcommittee liaison reports and announcements, policies and procedure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and if I just may on the consent, I just wanted to note one thing. I was looking at the minutes from our last meeting on January 22nd, and under monthly financial reports, it says, Ms. Johnson reported the budget was on track, and the good news was so far, no snow costs. That was literally on January 22nd. Unbelievable.
She won't say that again.
So, thank you. Policies and procedures met last night. We discussed with Dr. Bodie and Mr. Spiegel, the new maternity-paternity changes in the mass law that came into effect earlier this year, will actually come into effect on April 7th of this year, and what implications for our policies that will have, and we are scheduled to speak with our legal counsel just on that because our old FMLA policy seems to be a little bit outdated. We also discussed, Mr. Schlickman brought up, the idea of remote participation, given some of the members, Dr. Ampe, for example, tonight, and for future meetings, whether or not we could exercise that option under the new town meeting law. We can, and it was voted by the Board of Selectmen, and it was in fact voted by this body in December of 2011. So I don't think we have any, any problems with having, say, Dr. Allison Ampe come in via telephone, as long as a quorum here is present.
I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, I think there has to be some, it has to be part of the agenda notification, if possible, if we know ahead of time.
Yeah, yeah.
To just let the public know that a member would be, and it has to be a legitimate reason, not just that you decided to stay home.
Right.
You want to watch a football game or something like that.
Yeah, there are specific reasons why it would be exercised, yeah. And that's what we discussed last night. Thank you.
That's it?
Yep.
Curriculum instruction and assessment accountability, Dr. Ampe is not here, is there anyone from that committee that?
We haven't met.
Okay, thank you. Facilities, Mr. Thielman?
We meet on March 19th.
Okay. Special study group with superintendent's evaluation, I think we would plan on meeting at the end of January, and for some reason, we didn't make it.
Snowed out.
I mean, snow?
Snow.
We'll blame snow for everything, okay. So I will be-
No, that's true.
It was snow.
I'll be talking to Dr. Bodie about that and to the subcommittee, we'll hopefully have something to report at our next meeting. School Committee, Human Rights Commission, and joint subcommittee.
Snow.
Snow again. Does any member have any announcements they would like to share with the committee?
What about budget and community?
I'm sorry, budget?
You missed.
Community relations and budget.
Did I skip it?
Yeah.
I apologize, community relations.
We will be meeting Wednesday, February, Wednesday, February 25th at 5:30 PM in this beloved room.
Thank you. I apologize, I skipped right over both of them. Budget?
Yep, I got that one. We are attempting to find a meeting time, just so everyone is aware, we do have, the Budget Revenue Task Force is the Monday after break, so that's not this coming Monday, but the next Monday, 6 o'clock in the town hall. And I think we also forwarded everyone, the FinCom date is basically a month later, on March 23rd, and that'll be at 7:45 at the, we all get to go into the new police station.
Oh, fine.
It'll be at the community, but we don't, budget does not yet have a meeting set up.
Devin, I'm sorry. Oh, it's the 25th, FinCom, the presentation.
The 25th?
Is that what you said, the 26th?
No, it's the 23rd of March.
Oh, 23rd, I'm sorry, someone else said a different date, okay, thanks.
Do we post that ourselves because it's a joint meeting, or does each group post?
No, the FinCom posts it.
I think we need to post as well.
Okay. You think we need to?
If we, if we-
We're meeting as a group as well.
If we, yeah.
Why not? We're just invited.
We're just presenting.
Gotcha.
You can come and watch.
But there will be a possibility of a quorum.
Okay, whatever.
There usually is.
I've never posted before, but I can.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever.
Does any member have any announcements at this time? Anyone else have any announcements?
Florida fest?
Okay, this time, the committee will enter executive session to conduct strategy, strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union and/or non-union personnel, or contract negotiations with union and/or non-union, which if held in open meeting may have a detrimental effect. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
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 Yes. We will, we will exit executive session only for the purpose of adjournment.